We are live.
Okay, all right. Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, June 9th. It's the meeting of the planning board. We're starting a little early because we have a application for a to cut down a tree. And the meetings are going to be by Zoom because of the pandemic. So at 7:25, we have a scenic road application, consolidated tree warden, public hearing, 40 Bullard Lane, removal of a street tree for driveway access. We're going to start off with the reading of the notice, but before that happens, or actually after that happens, Nicole, I want to jump in, okay?
Town of Millis Office of the Planning Board. Under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15(c), Scenic Roads, and Mass General Law, Chapter 87, Section 3, a consolidated public hearing will be held by the Planning Board and Tree Warden on Tuesday, June 9th, 2020, at 7:25 p.m. in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, and via Zoom platform on the application of Ton McDonough, McDonough Building Incorporated, 118 Norfolk Road, Millis, Mass, requesting written consent of the Planning Board pursuant to scenic road rules and regulations of the Town of Millis for work associated with the removal of a 13-inch oak street tree for driveway access to proposed dwelling at 40 Bullard Lane, Assessors Map 2, Parcel 14. A copy of the application and plan is on file in the office of the Town Clerk and the Planning Board's website. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
Thank you. We actually tonight have the former Chair, who is actually the tree warden, and he's going to talk about the tree. Then we'll take some comments from the abutters or concerned citizens. I do want to say that I want to keep the comments strictly associated to any of the tree issues and be respectful of other people's time. So, all right, Mr. Carriggi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure that it was advertised appropriately into the paper.
Yes, it was, yep.
Want that on the record. I did go up to the site. I looked at the tree request to be removed. I do not, it's not a significant tree. I mean, it's a healthy oak, but when I mean my significant, it's not that large of a tree. So, and I think the applicant's proposal replacing it with, with, to, on the application, I don't have it in front, sorry.
It's two six-foot pines. Two six-foot pine oak are proposed to replace the 13-inch oak.
Yeah, two pin oak, which is what we have done in the past with trees that have been removed. So, I would take any questions or comments.
There any comments from the neighbors? I can't see anybody. Is there anyone that has raised their hand that I can't see? Nope? Okay. Since there were no comments from the, any of the neighbors, was there any comments from the board? All right, I think this seems pretty straightforward that somebody needs to take a tree down to make a driveway, and they're going to replace it with two smaller trees, although the older tree won't make it, but there'll be two to replace it. So, I make a motion that we approve the-
First, you have to close the public hearing.
Oh, sorry. Let me close the public hearing. Thank you, Camille.
You're welcome.
I make a motion we close the public hearing.
Okay.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion's been made and seconded and closed. So, I make a motion that we approve the application to cut down the tree on 40 Bullard Lane.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'd just like to add in that the final location of planting will be determined by the tree warden, and additionally, the trees will be planted to mass high specifications.
Okay, no, that's a good thing. Thank you. Appreciate that. So, the motions were made? Seconded? Motion's made and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion unanimously. So, all right. So, now being seven, oh, thank you, Bertus, by the way.
Thank you.
You know, I can hang around and listen to the rest of the meeting?
No, I had 19 years of it. I'm good.
He's very good. Dapper in his picture, doesn't he?
He does.
Profile picture.
That's my town Norfolk administrator picture. Have a good night.
All right, thank you, Bertus. All right, and now that it's 7:30, we have the application for approval of definitive space plan. Public hearing continued. Ridge Street, 43, open lot, space subdivision, Emerson Place. Nicole, if you could read that.
Town of Millis Office of the Planning Board, notice of public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 41, Section 81t and 81u, Mass General Law, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 9th, 2020, at 7:30 p.m. in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, and via Zoom platform on the application for approval of definitive plans submitted by TD Development LLC, Robert Fox, 38 Benjamin's Gate, Plymouth, Mass, 02360, for construction of a proposed 43-lot, single-family residential development at 13 Rolling Meadow Drive, Parcel 15-66. Ridge Street, several parcels, 20-25, 20-26, 20-28, 20-27, 23-04, and a portion of 84 Ridge Street, Parcel 20-53, Millis, Mass. Properties owned by TD Development LLC, GJ&amp;H LLC, Ridge Street Trust, Peter Markovitz, Joseph Fox, Amy Farina. A copy of the application and plan is on file in the office of the Town Clerk and on the Planning Board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
All right, thank you. I think Dan wanted to present some comments that he had. Is that correct? Dan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan Merrick with Legacy Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. Camille, I'm unable to share a screen.
Huh, I'll try. Is it working now?
Let me try. No.
Is it giving you an error message? Because it's, I set it to letting anyone share.
You try again here.
Yeah, I changed the settings are set to allow sharing.
Just getting a screen sharing as failed to start error. Try one more thing and then we'll, we'll move on, I guess, without seeing the plan. Everybody received a copy of it, I believe.
Yes.
Dan, this is Bob Micho. If you want to email it to me, I might be able to do a sheet here on your computer.
I could try to if you want. I have it on my screen to see if it-
Yeah, you want to try it?
Let me see. Oh, let me do it.
Yeah, it says you've started sharing your screen.
Beautiful.
Yep.
Thank you, Melissa. You're a lifesaver.
Try.
All right. So, let me just go through where we are. Melissa generated, we've submitted plans, a comprehensive set of responses on the 20th. Melissa has reviewed all of that and provided a memo to the board, basically indicating that the majority of items are taken care of. There were a few outstanding comments. We issued a new submission this past weekend that basically, I think, addressed and cleaned up those items, and I just want to kind of go through with you very quickly what we, what we did to address some of those comments and also the discussions that we had with the board at the last meeting, along with some discussions that we've had with some of the neighbors. So, one of the things, one of the waivers that we had forgotten to ask for was to, to change the grass strips at the wetlands crossings. Because you'll recall, we've narrowed the wetlands crossings to minimize wetlands impacts. The grass strip on the non-sidewalk side is reduced to about four or five feet, and the grass strip on the sidewalk side is eliminated. And what we have is, per Beta's request, we have required vertical granite curbing along those two crossings. And there are also guardrails on both sides of those two crossings. So, there's an additional waiver request for that particular item. Melissa, if you could pull up the profile sheets, the first one, which would be sheet number C23, zoom into the plan view at the Rolling Meadows intersection.
Right about there?
Hmm? We can't see that.
Oh.
We're seeing a window screen and your copy of the proposed decision.
The other screen.
Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, so, we've done a couple of things here. You'll notice that we have added, along the 11 Rolling Meadows property, we've added five proposed evergreen trees. We've also indicated that there are two existing white pines that are going to remain. That was based on a discussion that I had with them out at the site. We have added some additional light poles that we talked about on either side of the wetlands crossing. We, we indicated at the Rolling Meadow intersection and also at the Ridge Street intersection that we would do a mill and overlay over the intersection, which is standard after the utilities are cut in and all the curbing work is done and the sidewalk work is done, that they would go out when they do the top coat and they would do an inch and a half mill and overlay the intersection of each of those roads. We also spoke with the, the applicant spoke with the owner of number 14 Rolling Meadow, which is directly across the street from May Road, and we, we did two things there. One is we specified that the existing Cape Cod berm on their side of the road be replaced with vertical granite curbing, and also that some evergreen trees be planted in their front yard. And that basically would be, we would work with them on that. That's obviously on private property. It's at their discretion. But we've, we've indicated to them that we're willing to work with them to come up with a planting scheme at the front of their house, just so that any headlight issues won't be bothersome to them. We played around with some of the water and sewer stubs. If, Melissa, if you go to P, C25, right there, along that, the southerly side of May Road there, this road is going to directly above the neighbor's property. That's the neighbor at 18 Ridge Street. It's an existing horse farm. And then, as you can see, they're going to have an extensive amount of frontage on the new road. So, we took a look at it, and it appears that at some point in time, that if they ever chose to exercise that option, that they could probably put in three lots that front on May Road. So, we added water and sewer stubs in three different locations, in case at some point in the future, though that property is subdivided. And I think, we think it's smarter now to get those in place and, and in the construction project, so that down the road, the road wouldn't have to be cut open to tie into sewer or water services. We had some minor grading changes, some notes. We went through, and one of the outstanding questions was the sizing of the three stream crossings. So, we went through and we provided some additional calculations on that. They got a little bit bigger as a result of those calculations, but it's still, you know, it's three open-bottomed concrete box culverts. And the, this is something that the Conservation Commission is looking at carefully, because it's kind of in their, in their court. But the, the notion behind these culverts is to preserve a stream channel. Now, in these three locations, portions of the existing stream channel don't exist because their pipes are old culverts. So, we are going to, in those areas, we're going to remove those pipes, and we're going to remove those old stone culverts, and we're going to put in these, these concrete open-bottomed box culverts and build a stream channel inside of them. And they have a little, a small little low-profile weir wall embedded in the channel that basically allows us to control the flows going through these stream channels, so that the flow patterns in the post-construction condition are very similar to the existing construction condition. And that was all outlined in the drainage report that we submitted to the town. We took the beginning portion of June Way, which is one of the dead-end roads, and we had enough cover to make the first couple hundred feet gravity sewer instead of low-pressure sewer, so we made that change. The, the last couple hundred feet of June Way will still be low-pressure sewer, because we don't have the cover over the pipe that we would need to make them be gravity. And that's about it for plan changes. Those are the substantive issues. We did, if anyone has a question, we did show on the profile for May Road on either end. We just saw the Rolling Meadows end, but we added the houses and the existing driveways, so you could understand what's at the end of each road. So, I think Melissa's going to click on the Ridge Road end of it right now. Yeah, so you could see that the, the road is coming out across the street from the driveway. So, the area to the north of the driveway is all woods. You can see their house is kind of skewed off to the side, and their front yard is off to the side. The light poles, I had a conversation with DPW about this, we're going to the applicants willing to use a decorative light pole fixture, like basically the same or very similar fixture to what's downtown on Main Street. So, we added a specification on the plan that requires that those street light poles, which there's, I think, six of them or seven of them, be a decorative variety that you see downtown. So, it won't be kind of the traditional street lights that you've seen before, be a more aesthetically pleasing option. So, that's my summary of the plan changes. At this point, I think that we have tackled the outstanding issues that remain. I think we've addressed the questions and comments by the board. We've taken measures to accommodate the abutters at either end of May Road, and we have put together and emailed to you a draft decision that we could go through, if you'd like. I, I basically drafted a discussion about each of the waivers that we are seeking. We went through those at the last meeting, except for the, the 10th one, which is that waiver for the grass strip change to wetlands crossings.
Dan, before we, before we do that, let's, I want to go and let the board talk about the, you know, the, what you just went through and ask Melissa if she had any questions before you jump into the draft decision.
Sure. And one, one topic before you go down that road that I forgot to mention, there was a, there was a discussion with Melissa and DPW about type of pipe, drain pipe that we're going to use. And I think you might recall at the last meeting that that was kind of an open question. Beta recommended to the town that the piping within the roads be the traditional, what your regulations require, which is reinforced concrete pipe, and that the pipes that are shallow within three feet be a Class IV reinforced concrete pipe, which is a stronger pipe, and that the pipes that are outside of the street layouts could be HDPE. So, we did revise the plans to stipulate all of that, that in the roads, it's Class III RCP, except where there's less than three feet of cover. We went through the profile sheets, and on every profile, we graphically indicated where Class IV piping was required. And there's two lengths of pipe that are entirely outside of the road, and we, we updated the profile sheets and the waiver request to indicate that those, those lengths of pipe that are outside the road could be HDPE. Those pipes that are outside of the road will be maintained by the homeowners association. They're not the responsibility of the town. And we also submitted a revised O&amp;M plan. One of the other conversations that we had at the last meeting was that there's two, at this end of May Road that you're looking at here, there's two proprietary separators in the road that treat the runoff before it discharges towards the wetlands. And the town did not want to maintain those, because it requires some specialized equipment to maintain. So, we, we revised the O&amp;M plan to stipulate that the homeowners association, who will be doing annual maintenance anyways, will, will maintain those two units even after street access. And we've done that before on other projects.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for that. Melissa, did you have any comments? There was that one, the only one that we had talking about the culverts was the one with the, getting that Mass DOT approved for that longer one?
Right, yep. So, I was looking at, kind of breezing through the letter that Dan sent over, yes, or the other day, June 7th. In regards to, so, we brought up the issue that if these culverts are at stream crossing standards, then they are being proposed at more than, more than 10 feet wide, which if, if you're a public, if you're a public way, and you have a culvert over 10 feet, and it's kind of on the town to report that to Mass DOT, and I believe the process is that, you know, you report it to Mass DOT, and then you get, it gets put on an inspection list, and eventually, Mass DOT will come out and look at it and inspect it, if it's a public way. And then they might comment, comment on, on, on the bridge. So, being that this road is anticipated, I think that, you know, the intention is for it to go to town meeting and be accepted by the town, eventually become a public way, I'd, I'd recommend that, you know, we have a condition, we have a condition in, in here that plans, a design and plans be stamped and signed and provided prior to construction for approval by the board on these culverts. My, what I would propose is that we add to that condition, say that the bridge should be designed in detail in accordance with Mass DOT policies and requirements, knowing that it will eventually be turned over or requested to be turned over to the town, so that the town has that for their records. And if they do need DOT to come out and take a look, that, you know, we can be, we can feel comfortable that it'll, it'll pass DOT's inspection, and the town won't have to do any additional measures to bring it up to, you know, whatever they might comment on at that time.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. Dan, you'd be able to get that taken care of?
Well, I guess I'm, I'm curious about what that, is that just on the design end of things? Because Bob Micho, our traffic engineer is here, and he's, he's spoken with Mass DOT on this topic in the recent past, and Mass DOT has indicated that they, they would not put something like this through a bridge review process. So, I just want to be clear on what Melissa's asking us to do, so that I understand it.
I guess what I'm asking is that the final design plans, which are still to be finalized, and reviewed and approved prior to construction, just that they meet Mass DOT standards. I mean, usually, if Mass DOT were to decide that, you know, they wanted to come and take a look and, and comment on the bridges once they are public, my understanding is that the deficiencies that they would usually find are related to bridge railings or end treatments type of things that don't, that, you know, that don't meet what they typically call for, and that's what the town would be looking at dealing with if it wasn't up to snuff for them, if they decided to come out and look at these bridges.
Okay. I mean, I guess, for the time being, I guess, let's, we can, we can agree to that. I mean, honestly, I will not know if this is a big concern until I get a structural engineer to design these things. So, we may end up coming back to the board for further discussion on the topic. But if it's, if it's just about railings and things like that, I don't anticipate any issue with that.
Okay.
Is there anything else, Melissa, that you had that people, Dan said they did address all the comments, pretty much? Was there anything else that popped out that you wanted to discuss?
I wanted to check. So, we had made a comment on groundwater basements, two feet above seasonal high groundwater, just as a, you know, best engineering practice. Dan's, you know, commented on, on that, and, and I would agree, is that there's no regulation in town that requires this. It's just, you know, an engineering recommendation. So, I would agree that there's, there's nothing in the regs that could require, require it. I'd just say that it might be something that the town would want to consider when they look at their, updating their stormwater regs or, you know, regulations in the future, because, you know, it just comes down to dealing with some pumps and issues with, you know, pumping groundwater around sites. It's a good preventative measure.
Dan, with that, is there any issue in, in doing that? Is that going to be a big deal to do it, or?
Well, yeah, we have a concern about that, and I'll, I'll tell you why. It's a blanket condition of that nature is, I think, problematic. There are, there are certainly scenarios where you would want to be above groundwater, and that, that scenario is when your house is sitting in porous sand and gravel deposits, because the volumes of groundwater involved are high. You don't want a basement sitting in that. However, and this site has this other condition as well, there are oftentimes conditions where groundwater table is perched. It's not a real groundwater table. You know, if you have a restrictive soil, in the springtime, you know, the rain falls and the water works its way two or three feet in the ground, and then it kind of hangs out there for a little while. But it's not a real groundwater table, and it's not, it's not a lot of water. You know, in the glacial till soils where you have restricted flow, you're talking about small volumes of water. And in those kinds of conditions where you have a perched water table that's two feet below grade, you know, you impose a condition like that, you're building the house on top of the ground, and you end up with this huge mound of condition, and it's, it's aesthetically unpleasing, and you have to bring in a lot of fill. And, you know, in a lot of conditions where you have that, where you have tighter soils that don't pass a lot of water, you know, a gravity foundation drain or one sump pump that goes off for a couple of months in the spring resolves that problem, and you avoid the scenario of having to build houses right on top of the ground. you know, a gravity foundation drain or a one sump pump that goes off for a couple of months in the spring resolves that problem and you avoid the scenario of having to build houses right on top of the ground. So we're concerned about just the blank condition to that effect. We would rather that um, that that decision be left um for when the houses are being built on a case by case basis on the lots. You muted yourself, Rich.
There we go. Oh, I just unmuted myself.
You're good now. We can hear you. Not anymore.
muted. Hold on. There we go. How's that?
Good.
Uh, sorry about that. Um, uh, no, that makes sense. Uh, Dan, um, it just was a good thing to talk about. Uh, was there anything else, Melissa, that you had? I'm, I'm flipping through. There was a couple of items uh that uh, was it deferred to DPW? Um, U five uh verification of water hydrants is acceptable with Melissa DPW. Would that be something that happened later? That's on page uh twelve.
Our plans require that the water system be installed in accordance with DPW standards for the water system um for the town, water and sewer. So whatever the town standards are for hydrants and, you know, pipe materials, that's all, it's all stipulated on the plan to match town standards.
Okay.
Yeah, that, so, so the, the letter dated the um June seventh. Like I said, I breezed through it and those were the two that I picked out as kind of bigger ticket items that I just wanted to bring up for discussion. Um, I didn't get to, you know, spend more than twenty minutes kinda flipping through this letter. Um, it seemed like they were, you know, most of our comments were addressed, but I didn't get to check them, you know, against the plans. Um, so I just let you know that. I also um wanna let you know that I believe Greg Lucas from Beta, who did the traffic review, is on the call. Um, so if there were. Yes, he is. Um, I believe that most of the traffic comments were addressed, but if there's any questions from the board or anything else comes up related to the traffic, he's here. Um, so feel free to ask away um at traffic.
Yeah, the, the traffic comments were addressed to our satisfaction. But certainly we're here for discussion.
Um, there was one other comment that uh, that came up on, and this was something we ran into, Dan, on the, on the previous development of the shade trees.
Yeah.
You know, try to figure out a way to get those, um, you know what I mean? So they can't, you don't have the houses all done and then people say we don't want them. So we're gonna try to figure out a way. Did you have any thoughts on that?
Well, well, it's a tough one. Um, you know, if we go in and we install those shade trees up front and two years later, we go to, we go and build a house and the grade of the front yard wants to come up, you know, eighteen inches, now you're causing a problem for that tree. Or if you gotta bring in your water and sewer connections in there and, you know, in, in some proximity to those trees you planted, again, you could be stressing those trees. So it's a tough one. Um.
Could you make it part of the provision that, you know, the sale of the house requires them to have two trays? I mean, you could do it that way where, you know, I got it, you don't wanna put them in and then, you know, Kevin get mangled. Could you make it as part of the sale of the house, you have to have two trays in front of the house per town requirement?
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yes, so you, we, we could add a condition that says that um in the deeds to the houses that the homeowners are required to allow the installation of shade trees as required by the subdivision regulations.
Right, then that'll take care of it. Then you could do it, you know, as you need be.
Yep. Okay, yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Um, did anyone else in the board have any questions? Any comment? Miss, uh, sorry, uh, uh, let's see, we'll let Boden go first. Boden?
Oh, no. I'm saying, is any comments from the neighbors?
Well, we'll do that next. I wanted to get the board first. Okay, Ms. Riley?
Um, Dan, quick question. On the stop signs at either end of May Road, because those are, from either direction, you're coming up to those stop signs at night, could be relatively dark. Um, are those stop signs going to be the solar lit at night? And could they be?
They could be. We do have a street light at each intersection um that I would think would illuminate the stoplight. But they could be the solar variety if that's something the board wanted or DPW wanted.
Are they, are the stop sign, I'm trying to find on, trying to pull everything up, is the stop sign in the light pole? Okay, I see at the Ridge Street end, it is actually on the same side of the street.
Yeah, on the other side, on the other end, they're at the opposite side.
Opposite, yeah, that, at the, the Rolling Meadow. Um, the fact that, that the light pole is on the opposite side. My concern, especially at that end, um, if they're on opposite sides, would be over time as things grow in. And we all know that trees start to, as they grow, they tend to cover lights with that be. I, I just wanna make sure that especially going into a neighborhood, that those signs will be visible at night. Because there are no houses and no um light posts at the end of driveways.
Yeah, so we, we could flip that light to the other side. Um, there's some nice evergreen trees over there anyways. Um, and the, the second light in is on the top side of that road. So we could certainly flip that light pole over to the same side as the stop sign as a condition.
I, I, I'd be happy as long as, either way, as lo- as long as I know that those street signs are going to be visible um to cars as they're coming up. So if that's possible to move the streets, the streetlight posts, I'd be happy with that.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Thank you. That's all I have. Mr. Chair. You're muted again, Rich.
Uh, anyone else in the board that has any questions?
Chairman, just very quickly.
Yeah, go ahead, Chairman.
The, uh, Dan, if you just wanna briefly, I know this isn't the forum, but uh we did do, because there was concerns from the neighbors of the water pressure issue, if there could have been a water pressure issue, uh, the developer had hired. Uh, we did that test this past week and we believe they're acceptable. Correct, Dan, if you just wanna?
We did a fire flow test um using uh existing hydrants on Ridge Street and also on Rolling Meadow. Um, we found uh good results. Um, there's fifty-two PSI of pressure on Ridge Street, which is a very acceptable pressure. It's closer, it's closer to sixty on Rolling Meadow. It's about fifty-six PSI. And that's, I think, attributed to the fact that there's a better distribution system and a newer distribution system on that end. And there's uh a lot of flow available at Rolling Meadow. So when we connect the new water main from Rolling Meadow out to Ridge, that will actually improve conditions on Ridge Street. Uh, it should improve pressure and it will certainly improve available flow. And there should be no change at the Rolling Meadow end of things. You know, that forty-three homes sounds like a lot of homes, but they really doesn't use a lot of water.
No, and it's the idea of it, you, when you're looping a system in this large of an area, that's just helping, like Dan just stated, I mean, that's just helping the, the older end connecting into the newer end. So that, I, I think it's a, it's a win-win.
Okay, good. All right, um, let's see, is there no other comments from the board? Uh, I'll open it up to uh the uh butters and neighbors. Uh, just please keep your comments to uh, you know, this specific development. And um, I can't see the screen. Um, Camille?
It's Michael, Michael two, raised his hand.
Okay. All right, Michael, go ahead.
Hey everybody, how you doing? Good evening.
Good, thank you.
Um, do you still need to state your name and your, your address and all that stuff?
That would be great, yes.
Yeah, Michael two, sixty-eight Ridge Street. Um, so our property, property is directly affected by the southern end of um May Road there.
If you, uh, yeah, Melissa, if you look at the uh third profile sheet, it shows it pretty well.
And so my, my question is for uh Mr. McKay at DPW, given, given the extent of the mill and overlay uh shown in, in the updated plans here, are there, are there any provisions to take the opportunity uh while we're in Ridge Street to go ahead and mill and overlay s- south towards the curve um at the entrance of the cemetery to, to, to go ahead and take care of that portion of the, of the public way as well as it turns into Auburn? Uh, that's, that's just really, really bad road right there. Um, you know, my wife and I and, and the kids, we walk down that way every day. And, and the boys are just getting older and getting onto um balance bikes and, and pedal bikes. And, and, and I'd hate for somebody to go down um that, that uh, that embankment there into, into the wooded area.
Good, so to briefly explain, I mean, the, the, the paving of roads is, that's under the uh, what is the selectmen? I, I advise and I request roads to be paved. Um, right now, we have not, Melissa, we, we rely a hundred percent on chapter ninety funding. And I can tell you right now, the state has not released chapter ninety funding for this year. Uh, so whatever I have planned to be paved this year, it's still on hold until um those funds are released. Uh, Ridge Street is definitely on, on the high end of the uh list to be paved. And it was always with the idea of when this project got started and stuff, you know, it was being built, that those areas would be, be looked at. Um, so, you know, within a year, when they get out there, that, that could be a high priority that I would have a request to the selectmen for that to be done.
Fantastic, I appreciate it. I, I'd also, I'd also like to double back on that and, and, and ask, you know, there was some discussion earlier in the permitting process about variances that would be accepted by the town from the applicant. Um, and, and those funds would be uh used for specific reasons. Uh, is there a funding mechanism in place for us to shift those funds to be able to mill and overlay Ridge Street?
Again, that, that, what the planning board does, we, we receive for half the sidewalks. And I believe, Dan, I mean, what are we talking about? Maybe fifty thousand for this, if, if, if that? Um, and that, that, that's directly goes into sidewalk fund for sidewalk paving. Uh, and I think that's the only uh, what I, what I would say gift, and it's not a gift, it's a, it's a provision that the developer right now would have to uh turn that over. Uh, there are no other um amenities coming to the town other than what the alarm system and pretty much, that's about it, right?
Yep. Understood, and, and that's a, that's a fantastic segue. I, I'd like for the board to consider putting a sidewalk along Ridge Street. No fifty thousand dollars isn't, isn't a ton of money in terms of public infrastructure. Um, but that, we, I believe that, that curve at Auburn Street is, is, is pretty dangerous. Um, again, especially with our boys starting to get on bikes and, and getting away from us, um, and ahead of us. Um, I foresee that curve being an issue. Um, sidewalks along, along Ridge Street, especially in that area near that curve, would be extremely helpful. Um, I, I can see here in the plans, just on, on um Melissa's screen, that you, you already have a site triangle kinda cleared out. Um, if, if, if there's any possibility at any amount of sidewalk along Ridge Street, I think that's a, that's a plus in, in terms of uh what the neighborhood gains as well as uh, you know, allowing this project to go forward.
Right, and on that one, Michael, last meeting, we actually talked about that. And uh, um, with that, that's in the purview of the selectmen, uh, select boards are here. And uh, we can't force the developer to do that. They've given funding to the sidewalk fund. Um, you know, we agree, it, you know, would be great to have it in there. Um, unfortunately, we can't force them to uh improve, uh, you know, a street that's not in their development. Uh, they are giving funds towards the sidewalk fund. That gets into the selectman's hands, the select board's hands, and they have to decide, you know, where that goes. Um, if the neighborhood, you know, uh voice there, uh, you know, put into the select board that they were really interested in doing that, then that might help push you up the uh, you know, up the, up the ladder to getting them sooner. But we can't force them to do it.
Sure, understood. So my, my last comment, again, is it relates to the sidewalks, I mean, in public safety in general. I, I would imagine that uh, you know, we would probably be sending kids out from this neighborhood out to a school bus pickup. Um, it's very specifically inside the site triangle. Uh, would the planning board be willing to put a condition there to put some sidewalk there for some kids to stand and wait for a school bus?
The sidewalk comes to the end of the street, if I'm, uh, if I'm correct there, uh, Dan?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm referring directly inside the, the site, the site triangle. Would you guys be willing to put a, a, a little bit of space there for, for kids to congregate, to be able to, to wait in line and get onto a school bus? Directly on the, on the Ridge Street? Is that a, a condition that would be considered by the board?
We'd have to go to Dan and talk to him. Uh, I mean, that would increase the, the flair to the, to the uh, the, the road. That would be, uh, Dan, what would you thought be on if you made a little pocket there?
Well, I, I guess here are my thoughts. Um, number one, I think the school bus would probably end up going down this road. Um, but uh, we have a sidewalk that runs on the south side of May Road to the end and then terminates at the end right before Ridge Street. So certainly people could wait there. On the south side of our intersection, that's not land that we own. Um, that, that is the farm and they're, you know, they're amenable to us clearing out some trees to make the uh, the, the new triangle work. But it's not a place where we could put a sidewalk. Um, and this is the problem with this part of Ridge Street is that the right of way that the town owns is very, very narrow. And there's really no room for a sidewalk um within the town property. On the north side of the intersection, on uh the T U side, uh, we do control that land there. Um, but it is on the opposite side of our sidewalk. So I mean, I don't, I don't think that we would necessarily be opposed to, you know, putting a little hatch of sidewalk in there, but it's not, it's not really going anywhere. And I don't know honestly who would use it aside from, you know, the two houses that live right here. I think they could just as easily walk out to Ridge Street, I mean, to May Road and, and stand in the sidewalk that's gonna be on May Road.
George, did you wanna say something?
Nope.
No, I'm, I'm fine. I'm just listening. Um, no, I, I mean, I see your point on that, Dan, and, you know, one thing that we, we do try to do is to limit the impervious surfaces. So um, you know, it, it, it's a good thought. Um, I, I'm not sure how effective it would be, uh, just like Dan said, the stuff, a little piece of sidewalk there. Um, like I said, I understand the point.
I would say, I would say, Mr. Chairman, as a kind of an overall thought, what we found, we've done a number of subdivisions on existing roads without sidewalks. And what we find is that all the people who live around these subdivisions, South End Farm, Hickory Hills, end up going into these subdivisions and, and using them for a better place to walk and a better place to ride their bikes. And, and if it's a better place to stand and wait for a bus stop, then people use it. Because, you know, the, the older roads in town, and there are lots of them, don't have sidewalks. So when the new projects come along and they introduce sidewalks, it, it provides an opportunity for people who live on some of the nearby older roads to, to use the subdivision for walking and, and things like that.
Dan, Dan, with all due respect, those people don't have little kids that are obsessed with the fire station and the fire trucks of this town. So we have to go out that way. I'm not, the, these kids, they, they wanna see the fire trucks, they wanna see the town property, they wanna see the school, they wanna see the um, the police station. So I'm not gonna be able to stop these kids from going this way and, and down Curve Street. Um, so, you know, I mean, it's a, it's a point of concern. I appreciate you guys listening to it. Um, hopefully there's, you know, an opportunity. Um, hopefully there's, you know, an opportunity in the future to, to do something a little bit better and bring some more value to, to the, um, to the neighbors of this development.
And like I said, Michael, on that, I mean, you guys, you know, I would bring it up to the Select Board, I mean, if you guys, you know, make it a priority, you know, hopefully it'll help.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else that uh, would need, want to comment? And uh, Boda, was, are you waving, do we waving your hand?
There's a, there's two chats that I see, Rich.
Okay, hold on, sorry. Uh, let's see here.
Oh, wait a minute. Well, it looks like, okay, never mind, that was old, okay.
Okay, I don't see any chats.
No.
So, okay, well, I don't see any chats, um, so the, I would assume what we could do is we could close the public meeting. Um, if we did that, then there'd be no other, uh, no other information would be forthcoming on this. Um, what's the feeling in the board on that? Um, does everyone feel pretty confident that uh, we've uh, pretty much fleshed this out?
Yes.
Melissa, I would defer to Melissa just to make sure it's good with her.
Yeah, no, it makes sense, I was gonna ask her too.
Yeah, I mean, um, like I said, it, it seems from the uh, from the June seventh letter that all of our comments were gonna be addressed, like I said, I, I didn't get to back check them um, on the plans. Um, so could, just condition that I give it a look and everything checks out okay.
All right, that would make sense.
Dan, and I think, George, you tried to say something?
Yes.
George Skarakis, you, you, you-
No, you can, you can call me George.
George.
It's under new business, have we concluded this?
No.
May I, may I proceed?
No, we're not done with this, uh, we're still-
Let, let me know when new business came in, I've been-
Wait.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, um, all right, so I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Uh, we'll do this by roll call vote, so uh, please raise your hand and say uh, uh, A or N. Um, George?
Uh, I, I have a violation to present, may I proceed?
No, we're not done with this. George, sorry.
Oh, I thought you were asking me-
No, no, sorry about that. Um, I'd say I'm an I. Boda?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Man, I hit my damn button.
Uh, Josh?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, so it was a unanimous aye. All right, the public hearing is closed. Um, now we could, uh, Dan, did you wanna go through the waivers?
Yeah, we went through those at the last meeting, um-
Any changes to them?
No, so the only change was we added that one for the grass strips, um, and I, and I, as I indicated previously, and in my correspondence, I revised the waiver for the drain pipes to stipulate that H C P E could only be used outside of the public way per Beta and D P W's um, uh, decision on that topic.
Right, and you'll make a, you'll make a note on the trees to make sure that that's part of the sale of the property, that'll, that'll be included in there?
Yes, so um, in the draft decision, it sounded like we would add, uh, Melissa wanted some language about the um, bridges be designed to the MAST D O T standards, um, that the uh, owners of lots, um, that deeds require them to allow the installation of shade trees and that we move the street light at the Rolling Meadow end to the other side of the road. And we would ask for one additional, um, one additional condition, which would be to allow us to submit a, a land court layout plan. So the, a small portion of the uh, property up near the Rolling Meadows end is in land court and they need a separate land court layout sheet, it's a, a single sheet that we actually have um, prepared. Uh, it's going to look the same as the other layout sheets, but the subdivision plan itself gets recorded on the unregistered side of the registry and this single sheet would be recorded on the registry side, so we can just include a condition that, that that be submitted uh, prior to endorsements, then that would cover that topic.
Um, and Melissa, there, there was the one comment that you made it, that you wanted um, uh, something on a final review, since you, we just basically get the letter.
Um, yes, so pending, yeah.
Pending final comments from, from Beta.
Beta shall review uh, the final submission for compliance with their comments.
Dan, it's Bob.
Yes.
On the tree requirement, to plant trees prior to selling the house?
No, that's not, that's not what's gonna be required. What's gonna be required is that the deed that you convey to people requires them to accept and allow the installation of shade trees on their front yards. So there'll be no more, there'll be no more playing around with, you know, your, your customers about who wants a tree and who doesn't want a tree, they have to accept them.
Okay, good. Unless you wanna go through the tree roulette again? Another nightmare, huh? All right, um, well, I um, it let, does anybody else on the board have any comments? Cause uh, if no one else does, um, I'm gonna make a motion that um, we uh, we accept the um, um, definitive uh, subdivision.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I believe we have to um, grant the waivers first.
Okay, good point.
Yeah, typically you take votes on the waivers, um, you could do them as a group, you have a draft in front of you, you could certainly, you know, uh, vote the waivers as indicated on the drafts, or you could go through and vote each one individually and then, then typically there'd be a final vote to approve the definitive subdivision plan.
All right, um, I'm fine with doing them all at once, uh, did everyone else read them? We've gone off over them all. All right, so I make a motion that we accept the waivers as presented with the modifications that we made tonight, um, for the definitive subdivision, uh, Emerson Place.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, um, we'll have to do a, a vote per person, please, so um, George?
Yes.
Boda? Yes. Nicole?
Yes.
Um, Josh?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, so the motion is uh, carried unanimously. All right, um, so the next thing is, uh, we will make, I make a motion that we uh, approve the Emerson Place subdivision, uh, I don't know if I can read that, hold on, that would be Ridge Street forty-three open lot subdivision. Second. All right, the motion's been made and seconded.
I'm sorry, who seconded that? Don't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, Jim did. All right, uh, all in favor? George? Garrett?
Just, just a question, is this the, we're going through the final decision now, or we're gonna go through the whole decision? This is just for the waivers?
No, we went through the waivers, this is the final decision.
Okay, I just-
This is Joe Trover.
I'm, I'm having a hard time reading it, I was looking at one of the things down here before we vote on it, I know I'm a stickler with these hours and crap, and I can't get this thing to move, so we can get to those, I hate to be a pain in the butt, but go this one, go ahead.
I took, I, just so you know, I took these conditions verbatim out of Hickory Hills. Um, so I started with Hickory Hills' decision for this draft, so these conditions are from Hickory Hills, so that's, that language there was what we had for Hickory, seven AM to seven PM on, and Saturdays, seven AM to six PM, uh, only working on holidays uh, with uh, explicit permission from the building inspector.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to change is, is, is Monday through Friday, seven to six. We, we did that um, behind me in Acorn and it seems to work very well. I think the seven pushes it too much, I'm, I'm sorry, but that's my feeling, that's probably the only stipulation that I have.
I don't, I don't think that's a problem.
It's true. Um, it seems to work a lot better, um, now that there's so many people walking, there's, there's so many people living back there, uh, six o'clock seems to be a much better deal.
Okay.
And that, that's for any type of, cause you've got construction of roadway and you, when you, when you consider it related infrastructure, does that mean building?
No, subdivision control really doesn't uh, get into building construction, um, so this, you, you know, you're approving plans that provide the construction of the infrastructure, the roadway, the detention basins, all of that stuff, the developmental lots is something that falls under other regulations in town.
Okay, but didn't, didn't we have that in, in um, Acorn Place though? We had a, a seven to six?
Well, see, Acorn Place was a special permit, it was a single property, it's not a subdivision, right? That's the distinction here, this is, this is subdivision approval, this is really about the design and construction of the road that services all the lots, and then the lots are developers. Um, the, the, the development of the lots fall under different regulations, the Select Board has regulations, the Board of Health has regulations that apply to the development of the lots.
Okay, so as far as the, I'm, I'm looking at this as far as the people that live in the neighborhood and what have you, um, I don't want people in there at six o'clock in the morning banging nails and at nine o'clock at night banging nails, how do we, is that coming with the purview of the building inspector?
Yeah, it would. But I think the seven AM to seven PM thing is a town bylaw, cause I, I think that's where we started with that, I think the town has a noise ordinance and I think those are the hours for that.
That's correct. Change it from seven to, seven to six.
You, you know, I'm just saying that for, for other things, like for the construction of the homes, they'd still be bound by the town's noise bylaw, which is seven, seven, so you couldn't, couldn't start banging nails at six.
I think, I think that town bylaw could change to six o'clock.
Oh, did it, six AM?
We did that about three years ago.
Okay.
So, if we just wrote by whatever what the town bylaw states?
Right, okay.
All right, is that it? George, are you good?
That's it, I'm just, you know, me and my, my noise hanging.
Oh yeah, no, that makes sense, we don't want, we don't, it's uh, tough enough to live through it uh, with just going by the rules, so I understand. All right, um, so back to the vote on that, um, so this is the vote on the approving the definitive subdivision for Emerson Place, still George?
Uh, aye.
All right, Boda?
Aye.
Nicole? Josh?
Aye.
All right, Jim?
Aye.
All right, and I'm an aye also, so it passed unanimously. All right, good, well, um, thank you very much, Dan and everybody, and Melissa and Greg, appreciated all the help.
Thank you very- Can I ask Dan one quick question?
Sure.
When, when Bob will, um, I know you still have other places to go, but what's the schedule, clearing and stuff like that?
Uh, we expect to, we hope to be starting to work on the project um, at the end of the summer, the beginning of the fall. And then the phase one, as the plans indicate, the phase one will be the construction of May Road, which will be the, that main road that connects Rolling Meadow to Ridge Street. And then the other two uh, short dead-end roads would be um, uh, further away, you know, they might be a year and a half away or something like that.
Good to know, thanks, man.
Thank you.
And uh, I just wanted to thank the board for all your time and attention, uh, and the care that you took to uh, go through this process, the applicant, and I really appreciate
It's Bob, thank you all very much, I, I can't get on the screen, I'm smiling.
You're on, we can see your face, you can see your mug.
Thanks a lot, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, and um, so, we're gonna continue our meeting, so um, the next portion of the meeting would be the approval of the minutes uh, remote from May twenty-six, twenty twenty. Um, I read them and as usual, they were fantastic, um, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from May twenty-sixth.
Second.
All right, uh, motion was made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
And Rich, could I just interrupt here for one second? Could you please schedule, we need to schedule um, a July meeting?
I was just gonna say that. Yeah, congrats.
And August if possible.
Okay, one minute. Um, all right, July. So it'd be the seventh to fourteenth, seventh to fourteenth, which-
Seventh to the fourteenth.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, July fourth is on a Friday, so if people are on vacation the following week, we could do the seventh or the fourteenth, whatever works for most people.
Fourteenth sounds good, is that good for everybody?
That's good for me.
All right, let's do it the fourteenth.
Okay, July fourteenth.
And hopefully we're in um, all together.
Well, tonight is Jim's last night.
Right. Well, Jim, it was, oh, we thought about that, yes, so Jim, it was a pleasure working with you, I learned a lot, um, you know, your patience and um, knowledge of the, the D P W stuff was uh, very helpful, um, like I said, I really enjoyed the time uh, on you with the board, so, thank you.
In, in the same, um, I've worked with great people on this board in the past thirteen years, I'm glad I ended up beside George and the, um, you know, the Partridge Family Boost there, whatever they call it. There was many kicks under the tables that the both of us would either tell each other to shut up or, that's it. Uh, I remember when I first came here, you know, Kathy told me from the very beginning to be prepared and always rely on the book, our, our Bible, that, that, um, zoning bylaw book, and, and I did, I tried to make it every vote, you know, worthwhile for every resident in Meliss, um, and I've worked with Nicole, what, ten years, at least ten years, I think you've been here. Richard, the same, I think you've been here ten, eleven years. Um, Melissa, it's been great working with you, um, you've been a asset to the town. And Josh, you're just beginning, you're gonna take hopefully one of the seats in Boda, was always on the other side for the past year, so thank you all very, very much, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
All right, um, so, let's see, do we wanna try to do an August meeting also, since we're here?
Sure, we can, and then it can just be tentative, so that when we have the new members in July, we can always tweak it if we need to, but we certainly can set a tentative date for now, that would be helpful.
Let's, let's do the second one then, which is the eleventh.
That would be Tuesday, August eleventh, okay.
Yeah.
And I have to forget, I, I see everybody's faces and the one I miss the most important person that we all rely on the most is Camille. And I mean, well, at least once, twice, if I don't talk to her four or five times a week, and um, I don't think any of us would be prepared or anywhere near being ready for any meeting that we go to without Camille, and she's such an asset to, to Meliss in all the boards that she works on, um, not just this, you know, she writes for the toughest board of the Conservation Commission, there's such smart people there and, and she keeps us all in line on that, the C P C, and so uh, it's, it's, I'll still continue to work with Camille on a daily, weekly basis, so-
Absolutely. Thank you, Jim, absolutely.
Yeah, and I second that, it uh, it is nice to, it's, it's definitely nice to come to a meeting where, you know, everything is all laid out uh, really well and uh, you know, very detail oriented, it's a, it's a pleasure.
Thank you.
I think we have George in the corner, I don't know if he, he, Mr. Chair? Yeah, no, I said, I saw George, so I was just gonna get up to that next, um, so uh, George Skarakis, um, we can go ahead with your um, uh, your new business, um, if you could run through that, we're gonna, uh, we'll see how it goes, go ahead.
Well, uh, I'll make it simple, uh, I'm George Skarakis, I live at forty-one Bulldog Lane, I've lived in Meliss since sixty-three, and uh, I find that the Bulldog Lane scenic road has been violated, a thirty-four inch diameter oak tree has been fell, cut and removed, along with a thirty-one inch diameter oak tree in front of Lot thirty-five, just across the street from the previous discussion you had this evening at forty. Uh, I did not witness the cutting or the removal of the tree, however, what I did witness-
However, what I did witness is a significant amount of tree work on Lot thirty-five. And after witnessing the tree work, I noticed that these two trees that are on town property were cut and removed. I'd like to file a complaint under chapter eighty-seven, section three and section six. I filed it following. I sent six copies to the planning board's office. I gave Bota a copy and he was going to bring it to the meeting this evening. And I mailed a copy to Camille just when I found out that Camille hadn't received the copies. So I don't know what else I needed to do to present this violation to the town.
Um, so with that, I would imagine it would go to the tree warden, Jim? Would that be your thought?
That's correct, and I believe that, and the tree warden can speak for himself, but there was a public hearing that Everso's came in and early, it was last year about this time, about trees that would need to be taken down. And I believe that Tree Warden had a public hearing with the board of selectmen and gave them approval to take take down those two those two trees in question. But, okay, Mrs. Garacus says, George, just file the complaint, we'll we'll hear it through its process.
So those trees had a public hearing?
I believe that the tree warden will have to speak for himself, but the tree warden didn't.
Something something isn't right, because two weeks prior to the cutting and removal of those trees, public notices should have been given and the trees should have had a notice on it according to chapter eighty-seven.
This is a tree warden issue?
Yeah.
Okay.
If the tree were were cut and removed by the tree warden, we acted improperly because the trees are on town property.
Well, we can't speak for the tree warden. Your point is noted and we will have to follow up with that. It sounds like that the it may go to the building department and it will go to the tree warden to have them deal with it. You know, we are, if people want to cut trees down, they have to go and ask permission. It sounds like this has gone through the channels and I can't speak for them because I I have no knowledge.
I, as a Bota, received no information regarding that. I raise that as an issue. Although this might not be the appropriate place, I want the town, the planning board to be aware, there's a death threat in front of thirty-five. As you come up from Orchard Street on Bullard Lane, you're on a hill. As you come to the peak, as soon as you pass the peak, all of a sudden, you see up to the right, this barrier to people leaving the public way. They cannot leave the public way because this tree and a twenty-four foot, two-foot wall prevents people walking with carriages, people, pets on a leash, they cannot leave the road. And if an elderly person from our new elderly complex is driving the car, as soon as they pass the peak, the car will accelerate. They won't have an opportunity to react, they're going to kill whoever is in front of that object. The driver will not be able to go to the left because of the oncoming car. So I want you to know there's a serious safety, a death threat. And I'm disturbed that a decision was made and as a Bota was not informed.
Okay, well, your point was well noted, thank you. And the other concern in the road has been noted. It's not necessarily our purview, but, you know, we can, we can mention it and I don't know sure what they could do about it, so, but thank you for your concerns.
One other thing I could make, quickly. This subdivision you just spoke about, every every lot on that subdivision does not meet a building court due to the violation of the building commissioner who redefined lots. We don't meet, we don't meet the minimum front yard, we don't meet the side yard, and we don't meet the rear yard. I I guess the only effort I have is to take all of this to the courts. Thank you.
Okay, great, well, thank you very much. All right, and upon that, I make a motion to adjourn. Second. All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, great, thank you for everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
Bye, Jim, thank you.